All right, welcome Meramec. This is October 21st Board of Commissioners meeting of the Meramec Villas District. This webinar is offered by online. You can find that Zoom link on the agenda for tonight's meeting, which is on the website at mbdwater.org. And there's also a phone number there. And any of these meetings, you can just click on that link and call in the number and you participate. So I'll call a meeting to order at 5:05 and ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we have one Commissioner Wolf is excused tonight. He's traveling abroad. We've got four out of the five commissioners here in the room. So we don't need any roll call. And with that being said, we'll start with the Finance and Human Resources Review with Kristin Marle.
Thank you. The financials are given anywhere through September, which means we are a quarter of the way through the year. Currently, our revenue stands at $2.2 million, which is about 35% of the annual budget. Our expenses are at 1.2 million, which is about 19% of our budget. Currently, our net order ordinary income is about $1 million comparative to about half a million dollars from last year's same time. Our revenue right now is running high mostly due to the fact that, to my knowledge, were very high usage months due to the heat. And also our interest income, our rates are still relatively high due to the economy. We are making some significant money preparing trade. It's just nice.
It is nice.
In terms of expenses, I know last month you guys had a question about the purchase of water. I just put the first two months there, which is roughly what the budget was for the year. The rest will go below the line like we did last year. Again, as we get closer to here, we'll see how we are doing financially, whether or not we can move it in, or if we do need to ask for it from capital reserves. There's also a count number 70675.6. Which we needed a company to come into some chemical disposal, which is a specific company that deals with, we can't just have regular. So that is an amount that, again, overall in we are bottom up budget. So we're still alive, even though that is an expense that was unforeseen for us for this year. Any specific questions on the revenue and expense?
Don't have anything. Anybody else?
I'm just curious, you have a note rent under rentals, 720. Needed forever turnpike work with exactly with it.
They were doing the test rounds, right?
Test pits.
Test pits.
Okay. Location, we're looking for the power meter.
Oh, okay.
Sleep work.
Yep, I'm just curious.
And that janitorial, just so you lost some chemical on the, some caustic on the ground. So that was what that was. And I think we had some wage as well that we had taken away. So.
Yeah, proper disposal. Yeah. All right.
Moving over to capital reserve funds. Again, we are doing very well with our interest rate, with our capital reserve. Our balance for land is about 1.5 million dollars. And facilities, about $4 million, systems development, about 1.3-ish million dollars. Legal at 101,000. And water purchase and water treatment O and M at 104,000. The balances to potentially come out were updated based on our recently approved capital improvements plan that was sent to the town. We do have a lot to be determined because DOT has not let us know how much it's going to cost or what our portion of specifically for the bridge work on every turnpike. And then also what we may be doing with areas three, four, and five for the mainland extensions, which we are going to discuss a little later on our potential gap funding for that. Any questions on capital reserve?
I just want to know from when we go to the annual meeting next year, when they ask us why we have so much money in capital reserve accounts. This, because we never know what the DOT is going to cost for things like this, because we can't just make money come out of thin air. We have to plan for the future.
100%.
Good point. All right, no other questions? Ron.
And then sorry, I skipped a page. Fun balance. Page seven of the financials. Fun balance as of September 30th, our unassigned net balance is about $22 million for our operating, which I added that formula, which is actually about 15% convertible cash. Everything else is basically asset related. We are winding down on projects two, nine, and seven, eight. So that column, once we get our funding, should disappear. We did get confirmation from the take away. They do owe us another year of payment. So this fiscal year 2025 will be our last payment for the five years of O and M. And then we whittle that down depending on how you guys want to use it.
Great.
Questions on fun balance? Questions on any of the other reports? Just kind of different views of the financials?
Do you not have any questions?
Thank you for keeping such a close eye on the St. Cobain funds. I know that we had not received our last payment.
But we'll see to mention this.
That's awesome that we didn't miss it.
Right. All right, so that being said, next we can move on to the regular session. You're all set with that, Kristin, with everything, right? So we're going to hear an update on the status of the gap and funding grant applications submitted to Drinking Water Groundwater Trust Fund for two MBD Mainline Extension projects. And I think we got can't read the name here. Sorry, Terry. Sorry.
I know, it's okay.
Terry Devaris, I forgot. From Underwood. So you have the floor, Terry. Go ahead.
A great good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and for the board members. So we, I was just was presenting an update. We had, just as a brief background, had the two water projects that we presented to you back in June with kind of an update on the status of those. They were funded by two separate grants to the PFAS fund and ARPA funds, and those were referenced by their grant name, but generally they included, the first one was for the Gerard, Palmieri, Mulliken, and Wilson Hill Road area. And that was a grant in the amount of one and a half million dollars. And then there was a separate area for the Farmer Mason Foster Loop. Another one and a half million dollar grant. And when we presented to you back in June, we'd indicated that with those projects and the funding available, but the cost of them was going to be more than originally anticipated based on Underwood's engineering estimates. So we were essentially seeking at that point, some, you know, just to provide background and information update to the board, but also some, some direction on interest in seeking additional funding, which was the choice to move forward with. So we met with DS initially to talk about different options. Unfortunately, they were minimal in terms of what was available for additional gap funding. So what the district did is submit a clean water or drinking water SRF pre-application in May of 2024, trying to seek the potential for a loan or any other grant funding that might be available for for this gap funding. Unfortunately, with the metrics they use for the drinking water SRF pre-app process, the projects didn't rank high enough to be offered a loan. So following up with that, we actually went to the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund and did what's referred to as a special construction loan or grant request or combination thereof. And in August of 2024, Jill and Ron submitted an application requesting 100% grant funding through that program. And the amount of $850,000 was the total amount for additional gap funding, just to give you a sense of the overall, and that was for both projects. That, that committee has, has a process that they follow to review the, the documents. We actually met with the DS in early October to look through some of their questions on the application. Application was pretty extensive. But they generally were asking about, you know, the affordability of the project for the users. Commitment that was known by the district for how many people would connect. They asked about schedule of the projects and then if there'd be any impact if the project was not funded at all through the drinking, drinking water groundwater trust fund. So we in terms of that process, they go through a subcommittee. That subcommittee was on October 15th. So the, the three of us went, Jill, Ron, and myself. And we, we answered those questions for them. We had kind of preemptively sent some information to DS. And we can go through the, the information and detail if the, the board would like, but generally as it relates to the commitment part, there was a lot of discussion related to being sensitive about asking who wants to connect to a pipe that might not be there. So we were very, you know, we described the, the kind of being cautious about talking about and asking who is going to commit until we really understood what funding was available and what the extents of the project were going to be. So the subcommittee was very understanding of that. As it relates to affordability, they use certain metrics to figure out what's, what's affordable. After discussing kind of the details of the projects, the reason for the projects, there was a DS representative who actually brought up the fact that, you know, affordability index may not be the most appropriate metric to use as they're evaluating their commitments or potential recommendation on this project. And that, that kind of broader context really, I think, went well with the subcommittee and they understood because it's a health-related extension. This isn't just a request to extend the distribution system that maybe held a different kind of standard. And so that was a helpful comment from, from the state. You know, by the time we were done and Jill and Ron had answered many additional questions as well, they, the subcommittee recommended to move forward to the, the larger committee, which is 19 people that they provide a full 100% grant of that gap funding in the amount of 850,000 will be split by the two different projects. So we, we, our, our group will be back in front of the full committee on November 18th, and then we have to answer any additional questions, but the subcommittee has voted in the affirmative to, you know, kind of move it along and made their recommendation.
Part of what we wanted to, originally when they started asking about, you know, our capital reserves, what like what we had for funding and all that, Kristen had grouped together this study attachment that's in your packet.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
It shows the increases over the years. It also shows the debt that we incurred over the years. And once that went in front of the committee, there were a lot of head nods and you know, Terry did a great job tweaking this to make, make it reflect what our actual skin in the game is. That's what I call it, Terry.
Yeah.
So you guys already invested quite a bit of money to see that even though your affordability index is very low, low or high? High, high.
Highly affordable.
Highly affordable, yeah. But looking at this, they were saying, you know, it's not really fair to keep increasing rates just because you can, because people can afford it.
Right, right. Yeah, because I know in the past, when we got other drinking water groundwater trust fund grants, you know, prior to 2020 or whatever it was, they were always looking for some equivalent, some kind of skin in the game, some money that we've invested in. It's it's a good proactive idea to show that our customers have put this money into the system in the rates, you know, it's, this is showing like what a 74% increase from 2019. We had estimated 70% just for the treatment systems and the PFAS. And to come out at 74% with cost escalations on everything else, I think we did a good job, but still that shows that the PFAS related stuff was really significant increase to our customers. So I'm glad that hopefully is being recognized. It sounds like it was a good meeting. So yeah. Thanks for, thanks for going to that and getting those ideas and thoughts on the, in front of the board over there.
And it was, it was actually Brendan Coaden that made.
Oh, really? Nice.
And it almost seemed like it was kind of swaying the other way that there was going to be some sort of a recommendation probably for, you know, some sort of a loan or something, but it actually
Yeah.
after, after his comment that it was probably not applicable, that it seemed to really come around. So it was thankful for it.
Good. Yeah, I'll be sure to mention him next time I see him or talk to him, but that's, yeah, awesome. Thanks for letting me know. All right. So I guess November 18th, trying to keep our fingers crossed and see, is there anything we need to bring back to them for that meeting, or they have everything in front of them that they need?
I suspect they'll reach out if they do, but it sounded like they generally follow the will of the subcommittee, but we still have to be there to answer any, any major questions that might come up and still, still up to them.
Right, right.
I didn't get the sense though, I don't know if Jill or Ron did, that there was any additional kind of homework we had to do in advance.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was referring to. So, yeah, by all means.
We had all the questions answered before we even got there.
Yeah, good. All right. Any other questions or comments from anyone?
I think that's very exciting because I was thinking there was probably no money nowhere that we were going to see for this. So that's awesome that.
Right. Yeah, especially the state's been paying for private well sampling outside the consent boundary, you know, which this is the same situation, but it's, it's MBD's water. And it just, you know, makes sense to if, if it's outside the consent boundary, there's really nothing we can do to go back to, you know, St. Cobain about it. So these are the only other things available, either that or just, you know, take the hit ourselves and either use our reserves or have to bump the rate up higher to pay for it. So yeah, these alternatives are good. I appreciate every, all the work you do. All right, great, great.
All right.
You too. Thanks. Thanks for the meeting. Thank you.
Right.
All right. Next on the agenda, it was the, on the agenda is revisiting the distribution systems hydraulic model. And that's for information discussed in the work session back in June of 2023. I think if the board is willing, I, I would think we want to table that for another meeting. I know Wolf definitely had a lot of questions and I'm afraid if we've brought in Keith to discuss this tonight, there may be other questions that I think, you know, Wolf might have, and it'd be better to have it when we're all together. So if it's all right with you guys, we could probably table this to the next meeting if there's time, if, if whoever is available from Underwood and we'll do it then instead. Does that sound reasonable to everyone? I don't know if we have to vote on that, right?
I think that's your, isn't that your prerogative?
Yeah. Manipulate the agenda if I need to. I guess you're right. So if there's no other objection, I guess we'll just, we'll do that. It sounds reasonable. All right. So that being said, we'll move on to item number three, which is review of the draft conflict of interest policy. And that is required for recipients of the federal American Recovery Plan Act funds, which we are. So that's why we're looking at this pretty voluminous package, I would say. There's a lot of material in there.
A little bit of a background, we did a, what they call a desk review, which was a bunch of questions about how we deal with the financials of any money from the government or from the state that really was from the government to the state to us. And we have submitted all of those answers along with a bunch of policies that were required. And one of the policies required was this that we didn't have on paper, verbal, but not physically on paper. So official policy. This is also a legal review right now too. So there's, there's maybe some more changes. Nope, they should have Kerry's edits in it. Oh, it does?
Oh, it does? All right. Well, it's good that you ran it by her. That's, that was one of the things I was wondering to. So I don't know if there's anything you want to point out, or if you just want to ask the board if there's anything in here that we see that we have questions on or objections to or anything. I guess I didn't see anything significant myself here. And there's backup information that was provided to like the
Yes, I, I appendices that I did
Right.
attached along with the policy. It goes over some of the things. The IRS says of the state.
Yeah. There's something in here about references to jury. Wasn't sure what that was. Selection of jury? That somehow related to this?
Is that under that part? It's like quasi judicial.
It's kind of a, the IRS says from the state are kind of trying to incorporate everything.
Yeah.
So jury selections in terms of being a conflict of interest if you're a juror and depending on who the defendant is and so forth. So there's bits and pieces that I attached that pertain to us.
Yeah, I wasn't really sure what the link was. Okay.
It's just to, again, back up to, to the policy itself. But those are more general, whereas our, our specific policy is more specific to how we are going to deal with a conflict of interest.
Right. So I don't have any questions on any of this. I don't know if anybody else has a chance to, I know it's the first first reading. What do we end up with? Two or three readings? Where we sign off or?
We need at least two.
Yeah. Is there anything in here that you feel is something questionable or objectionable or anything like that?
Common sense, just written.
Yeah. Right. All right. So nothing else to suggested edits or anything on it. Maybe we bring this back for another meeting. Again, you know, it'd be good for, have, I don't know if that Wolf has any comments on anything too. So if none of us here, and if we're, if one of us is missing at the next meeting, at least we'll know that we didn't have anything at this meeting.
Right, there was an issue.
Maybe we can, if Wolf can attend the next meeting or give us his, I'm not aware that he emailed anyone his thoughts on anything on this, right?
I haven't seen anything though.
Yeah. So if it's got, if it takes two readings anyway, we can just schedule the next one for next month, if that works with your agenda.
There isn't like a date that they wanted us to fill by that we're not going to hit, right?
I sent them the draft, but told them it is a draft and has not been approved.
Okay.
But they wanted literally to know that it was in the works.
Okay. As long as we're not missing a date.
Yeah, that's a good point. I want to hold something up.
For some, you know, regulatory or legal issue.
Yeah, it's a good point. All right. So seeing nothing further on that, we'll move on to number four, which is the compensation letter to with immediate issues with the iron in the media, the GAC media. Well, seven and eight, I think there's a letter in here, right? So this has gone to them or has not yet?
Has not yet. Okay. So this is with your, has your edits?
All right.
And Kerry's as well.
All right, that's good.
Yeah, she drafted this.
And it's got the monetary amount that we're looking for compensation as a result of the time and effort lots of water revenue that we had to flush. Was it 20 million gallons or something like that of water that we had to flush to waste?
22,000.
To 22 million.
22 million, yeah.
Wow. Right. Yeah, I mean, I think this captures what, what we wanted to ask them and if anybody else has any questions or suggestions at all on this. If not, I guess you can.
I think it spells it out pretty.
Go ahead and send that out. Yeah.
Our original contact is all under there.
Okay. All right. So again, I think that Ron, you're signing it. You've got the authority and I don't think we need to vote on this, just if anybody is, has questions. If not, then go ahead and proceed with that.
Hey, sounds good.
All right, good. Moving right along, then it looks like we're looking at the minutes from September 16th, 2024. The regular meeting. I think those are the only minutes we have. It's like everyone was in attendance at that meeting. I don't have any edits to suggest. Anyone else have any corrections or edits to suggest? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion to approve September 16 minutes made by Ken Air, second by Erin Clement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that's 400. So that's approved. Next, we have action items. Generally just go through those or whichever ones are related to this month. So being October. Number two. I think we have that, a summary of the outstanding service requests from Underwood and Emery and Garrett. That's in the packet. Last page is there. So that looks in order. I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of those numbers. Projects outstanding, anything like that. There's nothing there. You do this quarterly, I think, right? So if we're all good on that, we'll change that last column to, what's that? November, December, January. So Dawn, if you can change the action item number two, last column to January.
Absolutely.
We'll keep moving on. So the next item is number three, which is the salt mitigation committee meetings. I know there was a doodle poll sent out.
There's one for the core group.
Okay.
And that's more of a discussion about the water show assistance planning grant.
Yep.
And then the doodle poll. So that's on the 25th, the core meeting. And then the doodle poll is for either November 6th, 7th, or 8th. I'm still waiting on some folks to back to that.
Okay. Yeah. So the one on, on the 25th is with DES two and
EGDA.
Yep, okay. All right. So I guess we can change. Alright, so um I guess we can change uh, what do we want to do on that one? October, you want to just? Put that for November? Well, it's it's probably gonna be. The meeting's probably gonna be over by the time our next meeting, right?
This meeting will be the sixth, seventh, or eighth, and our meeting will be till the third week, so we should have some moves.
Alright, why don't we just update number forty-three to uh November so that we? Talk about it here. Assuming not everyone's going, so that's why it'd be good to kind of discuss any of the um. Action from that meeting. Uh, the next uh October meeting is. I mean, uh, October thing is uh number fifty-nine. Uh, which is tracking complaints of water quality, discoloration, chlorine. That's related to item two on the agenda, I think. That was that we're we put off.
Yeah.
So maybe we can um change number fifty-nine to November. Cause we'll probably be discussing some of that. Cause I know it's part of the hydraulic model in there and stuff, so. So number fifty-nine, if you and uh Dawn changed that last column to November. Uh, next item number sixty-seven uh is with the the inquiry to New Hampshire D O T about moving a no-salt sign. That's on um industrial.
Industrial, and that was contingent on the salt letter.
Right.
Which is what we're discussing on the twenty-fifth.
Alright, so number sixty-seven, uh, we can change that last. Uh, column to November as well. And we'll have an update on that after the meeting. In October or November sixth, sixth or seventh, or whatever it was, fifth, sixth, seventh. Alright, next one, a monthly update on the waterline extension, I guess we just kind of got that too for the.
Got that.
Waiting for the drinking water groundwater trust grant. So that's monthly, we'll keep that on there as monthly, number seventy-nine. Uh, next one, number eighty-seven. Is a salt reduction letter to be sent in October annually. That's out to the customers in the well watershed protection area.
Yes, so.
Wellhead protection area.
We're actually working with um. Ryan from E G G I on that.
Okay.
Um, Emery and Garrett, sorry, not E G I. Yeah. Had to say that out of my head. So they actually have to do one for the watershed planning grant.
Oh, they do, alright.
So we're gonna combine them together and went out, so we're actually working with him on that.
Alright. Is uh any anticipated date to send that out? Like um November sometime maybe, or?
It's again, something we're gonna discuss the twenty-fifth too, that's part of the meeting as well.
That's October twenty. Okay.
The letter that we had sent out previously, I'd sent over to Ryan, so he could kind of see what we had, how we explained it last time. He also has the entire list that received letters, cause. It's all three, we sent it out to all three. Watershed uh wellhead protection areas.
Right.
They're focusing on that at Cook Brook.
Um, yeah, right.
But. We'd like to be have be consistent throughout, if we're gonna send out a letter, we'll send it to everybody.
Yeah. And I I do think the well seven and eight watershed look like the sodium and chloride spiked back up. Recent testing, so. Think it's important to cover all our bases on that, so. Um, so why don't we change that to November, we'll have something to report on, or maybe a letter to look at, or whatever goes out, or wants to go out. Um, so number eighty-seven, Dawn, if you can change that last column to November.
Okay.
Uh, looking out, number eighty-eight is a monthly report, any update on the status of the um pilot test?
So we're we're gonna do a um. Exor was gonna come in the week of the eighteenth.
November?
November eighteenth. To look at four and five. And then. It, I just got word from Lynette today that. We're gonna get back with. Blue Leaf. And kind of find out what their schedule is looking at now, but it sounds like it can kind of happen. Soon, which was.
Right. Okay.
I'm hoping so, um. Sometime after. Eighteenth.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions on that from anyone, or?
Just high level, is that you're looking for a different type of media or a different vendor?
Yeah, it's the pilot column test, which ultimately we could choose a a resin possibly for.
Are there two resins that we're looking at, or one, I can't remember now, there's there's like six different tests. I know four of them are carbon, maybe five.
Do you know what a pilot test is?
No.
Okay, then.
Background on this one.
You've got all these tubes that go down, you put the media in it and attracts it to see which is most efficient, and you have um that set up in each one of the treatment plants.
Yeah.
To find the best media.
Okay, well, it says vendor plans, so that was, I guess.
Yeah, so that's all those vendors of each of those medias.
Okay.
We'll have several of those.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're kind of optimizing, I guess, is the way to look at it, of what media works the best based on this pilot test. If there's something that's better than what we have, then we'll consider maybe switching to that.
So kind of.
Or do like a finishing. Or we can choose it in like a finishing purpose, so that we're not going through media as quickly.
Yep. Right.
So yeah, we have some G A Cs in it to. See if, yeah, to pick maybe a better media than we're using, or possibly even a polishing media as well. See how it performs.
And this is what the EPA was gonna pay for all the testing. For the lab stuff for the pilots.
That's still uh, that's still the plan as far as you know, right?
As far as I know, yes.
And hopefully that we're not delaying things so that. The, I don't know if that funding is gonna like, offer is gonna run out or anything like that, but.
I have not heard anything from them, like, you know, they haven't said anything to me later.
Yeah. Yeah, where's it going, where, has it started yet, or whatever, so, okay.
And just real real quick, just because it, what triggered me was with like the vendor thing in there is. Do we have, um, obviously, what's the contingency plan around, like, when you do start getting these medias from a a vendor? Right, do you have a backup vendor in case that one's not available, or is it just staggered in the way that the media's changed so that you can switch off to one well versus another, is how we operate that?
So we're actually choosing. The media, one of the medias is what we're using now for our makeup. And as far as I know, eh, there's no issues getting that media, and then it was, we just picked other vendors.
To test out their product.
Yeah, to test their product to possibly, you you know, it's gonna be against the one we're using now, so we may say. The one we're getting is fine, or it's comparable to what, you know, the the other G A Cs are, so we may just stay with that, or.
I think what you were asking was um, do we have a backup plan, like say our vendor, our vendor now goes out of business. We had a previous vendor that had the G A C as well, there's others out there.
No, they don't.
We've already been through. Yeah, we've already been through the sky falling and them not answering the phone.
Yeah.
We found another vendor.
Ron was having a hard time getting responsiveness from the company that supplied the original material. And. So what what we do is we take the exhausted G A C away, re- reconstitute it, regenerate it. And then bring it back. And then you always lose some volume that can't be re- regenerated, so you gotta add ten to fifteen percent more.
Right.
Um, so that means we need to also have that vendor supply some more carbon to us. So because they were very hard on trying to reschedule this, we were pushing off the changeouts because they couldn't accommodate us, so. Just eventually got sick of that and found a different vendor that does the same thing. So we've been using this vendor and it's much more friendly and. Costs less even or something.
Actually cheaper.
Yeah.
Answer the phone.
Much more efficient.
I'll call you back.
I actually have to remind them to invoice us.
Really?
It it it's just been um. So our last visit. Two and nine, it takes four va- four trucks to remove the media. To haul it away, it comes back in two. And then I had them, when they come back, drop it off, they'll immediately go right over to our well, if we have another one that's ready, they'll go right over to another well. And.
Take that video.
That day or the the following day, they'll they'll do it in the same day, and be out by noon time, whether the old vendor would have been. It would have been a, you know, at three o'clock or or later and um.
Yeah.
Just the way they work, it was just, it's just incredible, these these guys are.
So.
Less mobilization charges too, because they're making use of the.
Doing it all, yeah, so I get, I mean, my main question is like, if for some reason media becomes unavailable, like, what's the plan and how to?
So we actually went with an American. Made coal this time, so it's less likely to happen. So our old vendor, it was in a, the Australia.
Australia was one of them, yeah.
It's an Australian coal, so it was hard to get.
Yeah.
And that was like part of the reason it was causing um. The slowdowns, that I think it was just.
Probably overloaded with.
Yeah. But.
So.
Should not happen.
Should not, but if.
If it.
There's other vendors out there?
Yeah, there's, this vendor is similar to to Calgon Carbon, there's there is a product from them we could go to that's very similar in size.
But you have a plan.
We, I don't actually have it written down, but it's a phone call and I could, I could come up with a plan, but.
Uh, to come over, there's no contracts, right?
No.
Yeah, we're past like all the guarantees and the bed volume.
Yeah.
And all that.
It's not like, I mean, when they take the media, they regen it, which basically means they bake it really, really hot.
Yeah.
And then it comes back again, so we, it's not like we could lose all of our media. I mean, we would only ever lose like two tanks at a time kind of thing at one set of wells.
Yep, so you might run out of it.
They disappeared in the, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you still, so you still have the lead. Or it would have.
You would still have, correct, one set of vessels of that.
Stays in operation, it's just you don't have the, you only have one vessel retreat.
You get the lead vessel, you don't have a leg anymore, until it comes back.
Till they come back and put the media back in the empty vessel, then you have two in series again, like we always.
But even the turn time for this new company, getting the media back.
It's almost too quick.
It's like night and day.
Wow.
Yeah.
If you want to do maintenance or something while they're gone, you have to like book it because.
Is the company that that cleans it different than the one that supplies it?
I don't know. Oh, good question, I'll have to find, I don't know if they own.
I don't think they make it, I think they buy the resupply.
So it's just the.
Not their product.
It's. It's their product, I don't know if they make it or not.
Right, if they buy it.
But I don't know if they're doing the re, if they're hauling off to a a regen. Facility that does other haulers.
Yeah, you don't know if they own and operate the regeneration.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
So the other question I have is if we're doing this pilot test and we find there's a carbon that looks like it works better than the present carbon we're using. Does this company have the ability to supply us different carbons? Or do they just, I. Do they have their own line of carbon, that's all they supply, or they have multiple lines, or?
They have.
I don't know if you know, you know.
They have multiple, they have their own line of carbons, but they have different carbons within that.
Okay.
So this was just, and I chose the twelve forty because of mesh size, it's a different weight, but it's a, because of the, because of the mesh size. We could certainly go with a different product through them, or.
Yeah, so it sounds like they're really responsive in the delivery and the regenerating the carbon, so it'd be nice to stay with them. And not have to go through a whole other supplier and all that, if we find there's a better carbon product that works better for us. Make make the exhaustion, you know, extended a couple months longer or something, I don't know. But it'd be nice to be able to use this company now that you've gone through the pains of finding something that works.
They're turning around uh. Within a week on the last one.
Yeah. I mean, I guess we'd evaluate all that, if this test, pilot test shows us there's a better product that looks like it works much better than what we're using. Then we can inquire with this company and say, can you supply this to us?
Right.
Depending on what we're what we're using, they might have a comparable media to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Test that other meat.
Yeah.
Their comparable media to what we were testing to.
Yeah.
I think that was the point of the pilot testing, cause when you talk to these vendors, they're like, oh, my product is so much better than this product. It's gonna last like three times as long, and even what we were promised at the outset of when they got the Evoqua media was not what actually happened. You know, the time change where the the vendor said it'll take to what actually happens on a day-to-day basis is not the same. So I think that's one of the good things about the pilot testing, because those short chains are what run us ragged in having to change media. So if we can find something that even works for just those short chains, we can put in some polishing, not go through the major vats of media as quickly.
Yeah. And there there's a couple of, there's one or two of the six that we're testing that is not carbon at all, it's it's an anion resin. It's kind of like what you use in a water softener, but like a different polarity to it, instead of cation, it's anion, so. That removes G A C as well, and it's less, it's more expensive, but you need less of it. So there's like a trade-off there too, but, so we're hoping some of this information gives us an understanding of um, like, does some work better for the short chains? Cause that's what's breaking through first is the short chains, and that's what causes us to replace the media that we have. So if there's something we find that works better on the short chains, that might be something we might consider switching to. Or like you said, maybe you want to.
Polishing.
Add that on after the carbon, and put additional filters on. Just for the short chains that always break through first, so that we don't have to change out. The the main carbon vessels as frequently, so. We're hoping to get a lot of information out of this this test. And um, and like Jill said, we've got the same kind of setup at all three of our treatment plants. In case the water's a little bit different in a different plant than it is in wells four and five.
Right.
We'd probably all be consistent pretty close, but.
And I think putting our media in one of the pilot tests is great, because then. We know what our media does in real life and in big scale, so then we can compare apples to apples.
Right.
Versus, you know, if we had just a whole bunch of different new medias, it's harder, you know, we know what our media does in real life and we can see it in the pilot column. And then compare that to all the other things.
Yeah, I didn't realize that you you came on after all of this was.
Yeah, there's there's still more learning for me to hear about.
Like, I I didn't realize.
This is the stuff that Dawn and I fall into holes about as a.
Yeah, I know.
But yeah, no, thank you for the uh, the overview, um, but yeah, it was, my my question was more around like, you know, playbook or or something of the sort for issues that arise from a vendor because of that.
Yeah, unforeseen circumstances type thing, right, yeah.
And unlikely, but.
And it was really just a phone call, so.
Yeah.
It was a, it was a phone call out to, and it was whoever responded, and in this jump, uh, John Allen called me back, we sat in the phone talk for probably half an hour and. We gave him, gave him a try and it's been. He's been, you know. True to his word, really, um, and what has, you know. You know, service anyway, ended it anyways, and I, we haven't noticed anything, you know, less of the product, I think it's still.
That still seems to be performing consistently.
G A C is.
Well, again, it it. The majority of it is still the original G A C that we had, it's only been added to a few times, ten percent at a time, so. Maybe half of it now is, or, you know, and eventually it's gonna be almost all slowly replaced over time if you keep adding ten to fifteen percent to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what's the name of the company, do you remember off the top of your head?
Uh, Carbon Activated Corporation.
Okay. Yeah, I've never heard of them, but that's, it's good to know. So. Alright, anything else on that, or anybody have any other questions?
I don't know.
Did you get an answer? Good enough?
I think one of the hard things about this whole industry is it's new. We were one of the first communities to have these filters online.
Yeah.
Um, so the industry that was there to support these filters was just starting.
Yeah, so I mean, again, my main concern is if for some reason something isn't available, how does it impact the availability of clean water? For how long?
Right.
And then do we have a process in place to rectify that?
Right.
And is it known by people that can make those calls, right, so if you're not available, can somebody else handle that? Is it written down somewhere, like, hey, if this vendor's not available, you gotta call this person, actually have this documented out, but. Handle that? Is it written down somewhere like, hey, if this vendor is not available, you gotta call this person and actually have this documented out. But if. I mean, if it's six months where, you know, the media can be reused, reused, reused and. You know, you're still okay, but you may be diminished capacity is probably not that big of a deal. That's a lot of time to figure out how to. Get yourself back on to a hundred percent.
And your answer is like, or your question, there's there's the answer is that we. To be compliant with the regulated PFAS, I think we can probably go like a year or two or more, probably two years.
Right.
But it's the short unregulated short chains that.
Yeah.
What we're basing our change out on. And if if that, if if it was three or four or six months delayed on getting another service call out here. It would just be those short chains that would continue to bleed in, which would not, it's not what we want, but it's not. It's not like we have a compliance issue with that. It's um it's just our preference to try and keep.
I think also the fact that the federal government with their compliance. That that all towns need to have treatment plant within the next three years, competition. There are going to be more and more.
It's gonna be better.
Board to say, oh, we didn't, we want to go into this business.
Yeah.
So I think we will have a lot more choices too.
Yeah, it's definitely not going away.
So either that or if they don't scale up, we're gonna have a hard time. Getting supplied because everyone's gonna be overusing those companies. So it kind of depends on how they're gonna react. Yeah.
There's different ways that we can handle that as well. So we can actually in in talking with John, we could do a. Complete change out of our media. We can actually have, they will hold a swing load for us. So we don't have to worry about getting a a media.
So if it can't be regenerated fast enough.
Correct.
We can take a new load.
They can back, drop us, drop a load in, complete load.
Brand new media.
Take off, you know, regenerate.
Yep.
Add media. So there are different.
That's a good point. That's a good, that's a good point to help.
As well. And part of the study, as we as we decide on the media, we there is going to be a. Kind of a plan developed on how we want to, you know, move forward. If it's gonna be a complete change out, because eventually we want to. We'd like to figure out a way to to completely change the media overall from either if we. Utilize what we have or completely change over to, you know, carbon.
Do certain wells at a time so that we don't want to just throw away good media. We would just wear it down to other wells.
So we would use some wells media that's regenerated as makeup for the other wells media. And then if we so if we wanted to go with a whole new fresh batch of media, we could put that at one plant. And use the media that came out of the vessel regenerated and then just using that as makeup until that's spent.
Right.
Cause you don't want to really just throw away all the media that you have because it can be regenerated and reused. At a less price than buying brand new media.
No, so you guys are the experts, but as long as there's some sort of plan, I think that's the that's the key, especially what you just said though.
Yeah.
Before that, which is, you know, if they get busy, what's gonna happen?
Exactly, yeah.
So.
I think I think there's a plan there. Like Ron said, it's just not written, but I think all these issues we've discussed in the past.
I may have written it out. Nothing is, that's the plan, but there's.
Right.
Some ideas floating around and and it was kind of depending on, you know, how this pilot test turned out as well and.
Okay, so we revisit after the pilot test.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I mean, this pilot test is probably gonna last like six months or.
Yeah.
Or more.
Problems.
Yeah, it depends. I mean, if it goes longer, that's good because that means it's writings aren't breaking through fast, you know, so. That wouldn't be a bad thing necessarily.
Okay.
All right, good. Well, move on. Um, that one, that was number eight, right? So that's monthly. We'll just keep that one there. The last one on that page, number ninety four. Um, oh yeah, we already talked about that. That was the cost of the flushing of the water. Um, ninety five, update on waterline extensions.
So.
That's the Saint Obane Waterline Extension.
Christopher and Wildcat Water mains, they're all they're in. Run the lane was completed on Friday. Uh, today they should have filled it and soaked for a day. Tomorrow they probably would be flushing and bacteria sample and they've started on. Uh, services, I believe on Wildcat and uh Christopher.
So um who's doing inspections on those? Is it somebody paid by Saint Obane or? Guys hopefully go.
We're up there as well. I've been up there.
Yeah, cause I I feel comfortable, most comfortable having our own staff put. I've been on eyes on there and.
I've been out there a bunch of times myself. Steve has been out there. Um, Todd has been out at different times.
This is all uh ductal iron pipe.
Kevin, I see. That's why I was looking at you. Kevin, I always lose his name. He's he's pretty good. That I and I do have to say the crew, um. Joseph Cardello, uh excellent crew.
Oh, yeah.
Um, very, very good work. Really no complaints. Uh, good. They noticed. Uh, Wildcat and uh Christopher. The wrong hydrants were out there that they're gonna change them out. Uh, they were open lefts instead of open rights.
Yeah, that's not good. Fire department will go out of their mind.
Yeah, um, I mean, it is labeled, but still everything else. Three in a neighborhood that are the right one, the direction, so.
Did you find that or did uh um construction representatives? Is there a construction representative that Saint Obane is paying for or we just?
There is, that's Kevin.
Oh, it is. All right.
Okay, whole time and I I don't know, I think Steve may have noticed it being out there and.
Yeah.
So I think they come from Steve, but it so they're gonna, that's gonna be fixed and it hasn't already been.
Right.
Actually, we stepped that back. It has been fixed.
Well, that's good.
When they were flushing out Wildcat, I get that it was fixed, so.
Okay.
But an excellent group. I I they really, they really do this work, so.
Yes, I mean, anything that anybody sees out there, now's the time to uh correct it, so. Doing that. All right, we'll go with that. We'll move on. Number ninety six is uh the cybersecurity information. Um, Steph, discuss contractors. What's uh any update on any of that?
Um, not really. I Wolf still has a couple of questions. That he was going to ask Jason. I do not know if they have met or not.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, I do have a my monthly meeting with Block Five. Supposed to be Thursday. I'm trying to ask them to move it to Tuesday or Wednesday to go over uh where we are with. Moving to dot gov. Um, we have approved. Um, it would be MVD Water and H dot gov. Um, it is up and running, but we haven't alerted anybody. So I want to know where we are with that because we also need to update.
Yeah.
And so forth. So there's a lot that goes.
That's a bigger process than.
It's a bigger process, yes.
It is definitely.
So find out where he is with Amy and updating the web the websites so that we can. Kind of get a timeline on when we can inform the public.
Then everyone's got new.
I also got a bunch of um. And I'm probably gonna say this wrong, U B keys that were free from the government. Um, to do multi factor authentication for us with the office here to get to our servers. I want to talk to you about what's the appropriate way to put those out, so. Um, and then there is some um also free from the government, some cyber. Um, certificates training that I may look into, um, just more to learn about. Specific speak.
I just got a notification from Primex today about some cybersecurity training.
Yes.
Certificates.
That that is what I'm looking into. Um, there's some real high level. That I'm not qualified for. And then there's some low ones that are meant for people like me. Um.
Good.
And they're all free from, because this is a big thing from the government trying to keep us safe, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I do remember Wolf was involved with a lot of that, so um. I guess why don't we change uh the next that to um the next month, maybe? Is that appropriate, you think? The um cybersecurity to November to kind of report on it again?
And it's too bad this month is Awareness Month. For cybersecurity.
Yeah, right.
Whatever questions you do have, just feel free to shoot them to me. That's what I do.
Well, there you go. Might want to have a conversation with Wolf too and well, there was some email. What's that?
I talk to Wolf all the time, but.
Yeah.
Not about this, but.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. There was a whole list of uh questions that went back and forth.
Correct, and I don't know if he has settled yet.
Right, right. So I don't know if if he maybe be looking for a little help on that possibly. I know it was a thing for him to kind of take on, so.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, I want to reach out to him if that's if you feel so inclined.
We're also having our. Walk through uh at the end of this month, October twenty ninth.
Who's that with?
Uh, Adam Group.
Oh, yeah.
Um. To see where our current policy stands. And again, it's that high level one. Um. To see where we can have improvements and so forth, but it it will be a. On site with them, walking through.
Do you know what time that will be?
I think it's ten.
Time.
Ten on the twenty nine.
It's here.
It will be here.
Going to the treatment plants too at all or no? Just uh.
If we have to.
Yeah.
Um.
So kind of looking for infrastructure and other things like.
You know, can you send me that invite for that? I can make it all.
Good.
Welcome.
That'd be good.
It's either nine or ten. It's a it's a Tuesday. So that we weren't all turn off on a Monday. Can you do Tuesdays?
All right, awesome. Um, so number ninety six, Don, if you wanted to uh change October, that last column to November. And see if we have a report next month on that. And then the last one ninety is uh follow up on Bitchel Woods PFAS status. Power supply. I don't know if you had a chance to get any information on that.
So he is maybe hard to nail down.
Yeah.
He's on vacation and everything else. I did talk to him today. He's actually, he is looking into it.
All right, okay. Yeah, because Jamie had put together. A proposal, samples, monitoring wells and do more sampling or something last.
That's on pause just while we um.
Yeah.
Had talked legal and. Better answers. We just need to set up a meeting. We did talk to the town manager.
Okay.
And where so he but he was on vacation um last week.
Yeah, right, okay.
He's going back and he's um he's gonna hold a DPW and. Get the wheels turning on investigating what's going on out there.
Yeah, all right. So we want to uh push that out a month, two months, month?
Month is fine.
All right, Don, if you can um change number ninety eight, the last column to November.
Okay.
Uh, I don't think we have any new action items to add to this that I'm aware of. That being said, then um. That old business. Seven on the agenda. What do you have any old business to resurrect? If not, then new business. There. The only question I had is I don't know if there was, I didn't see a sheet in here on the um. Like the status of the GAC change out. Um, you know, it tracks when the. Leader lag vessel was put into position and how many months out, eight months.
So would you say both?
Yeah, so that's part of your uh.
Uh, we're just.
Report, go ahead.
Four or five would would so. Two and nine are back in online. They were never offline, but. Both trains are.
So our four vessels are full of uh.
Yes.
Right.
And then. Four and five, that was a. A weak turnaround.
Wow.
It was almost like too quick. It was.
Wow.
Basically, you open up, you look around, poof, slide back up, you know, do a bacteria test and and they're back with the media, throw it back in.
Do we do anything with seven and eight or I can't remember?
That's coming up in November, so I better make arrangements for that one. Um. And I will actually, that's something I gotta do tomorrow because I want to get on the list. So I gotta get that one moving. But we have, just want to mention it. Four and five and seven and two and nine are completely are have been changed out.
Whether those get back online with the fresh media installed. That was it. Was it October or was it uh?
It was. The eighth was the return of me uh was the pickup, was the return of well two and nine. Again, they.
Four and five.
And they took out four and five and they returned on the seventeenth, I believe.
Oh, wow. So it's seven and eight, when you uh can change that out in November. Um, I'd be interested, is it? Is it the vessel that was damaged by the bridge that was repaired? That we're gonna evacuate? If it is, I'm just make sure we look inside because we want to make sure that it was. That was the one that was like repainted and all that stuff.
Was it? I I'm.
And we were skeptical. All right, okay.
So part of the part, part of what we like to do when we have the vessel, you know, open up the hatch when you have it evacuated. We like to take pictures of the inside anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Try to get around to pictures and it's going into our. I S or.
Asset management.
Thank you. And we're storing those.
So then you can compare to what it looked like the previous and see if there's any deterioration or what. Yeah, okay.
So we have been watching the media, uh the media, the um coding and.
Yeah.
On all the vessels. Every time we can get a chance to get to look in there, we can take pictures and we can kind of shine a light, look around. Just make sure that things are looking good, so.
Good, all right. All right, that's good. Um, any other uh superintendents information to report on?
And the other, uh, I did talk to Paul. Uh, I did email him about the salt letter. He was gonna look at it. I do not recall saying, saying that, but he was gonna look into it. So I just need to get back with him and see if that was what was.
Oh, when he reported.
Watched them. He's on vacation.
Counsel. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can say he was gonna rewatch the the video and. Somebody said he didn't recall saying.
Next time I'll send you the timestamp.
Yeah.
I want to ask it about the um the change out policy that the board should vote to um to. Um, get it moved to have it as a second reading.
Okay.
As of as is to go for a second.
Oh, all right. Yeah, all right. That makes sense. So.
Policy, yeah. Yes.
All right, so if you wanted, if someone wants to make a motion to uh approve the first reading of the um.
Conflict.
Conflict. Interest policy with the expectation that a second reading is gonna happen in the future.
I'll make the motion as how do you shorten that up?
As I stated.
I'll second.
All right, all right. Motion by Scott, second by Aaron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that's four zero zero. No oppositions, no abstentions. Good, that's a good catch. Appreciate that. Um, so I guess that's it. No uh more superintendent board information than um I guess. I'll entertain a uh motion to adjourn. I'll entertain a uh motion to adjourn this record short meeting of M V D's in history. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about the um questions from the press and public. We usually look on there, make sure no um. That nobody in the uh. Whatever waiting room or anything is there, wait, or meeting room or.
I see three participants.
Which is like those three that are on the screen there.
Right.
No attendees, okay. So that being said, motion to adjourn by anyone?
So moved.
Motion by Ken.
Second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Use adjourn four zero zero, no oppositions, no abstentions. And we'll see you next on November.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Thank you.